on April 1, 2016. The meeting will convene at approximately 6:30 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Rhodey. I'm a professor in environmental studies and biology at UNO, also the director of the Center for Urban Sustainability at UNO, and I'm a landscape architect, so I wear a lot of hats. But as a faculty involved with service learning, I guess the first thing is just to say what a privilege it is to work with OPS faculty and staff and administration. This relationship would not work the way it does without the kindness, but also the kind of the stick-to-it-ness. A lot of these projects are not your classic textbook. It would be much easier for me to go to a classroom and lecture about rain gardens for an hour than it would be to engage an entire semester of college students and elementary or high school students as part of design and planting and development of some of these gardens that you'll hear about in just a second. So, I would say, I guess, the key, and we cover everything from STEM to environmental resources, we've actually had the city involved as well in terms of the combined sewer overflow project, so any water that we hold on some of these school sites is literally a benefit to the city as well. So, I would say the one thing from my perspective is how strongly we try to tie what we do to curriculum, both with the OPS curriculum as well as our own curriculum. The stronger we can do that, the more likely it is that these projects will have a longer lifespan and actually be seen as a benefit to all the faculty regardless of what you happen to teach at any of these schools.
Good evening. My name's Monica Green, principal at Benson West. This is Meg Searle, the assistant principal, and we've had the benefit of being a part of this partnership and having a rain garden at Benson West, and we just wanted to share a couple of things that we've seen. Before I go to, like, the classroom examples, I do want to share that just having that part of the building being beautified has brought our community in, and they're interested in coming in to help to beautify the rest of our grounds. If you know the Benson area, there's just a lot of unique changes that are happening in the community, and we're kind of excited to be a part of it, and our community is excited as well. I think one of the experiences, as far as the kids are concerned, that sticks out with me the most is our kindergarten class. We're studying the life cycle of the monarch butterfly, and so they caught a caterpillar and were able to watch the whole life cycle of that, and so we've just got a lot of cool data and experiences with little five-year-olds that are able to see that entire process happen.
And so another example that we've seen that was really exciting is our sixth graders were able to work with the UNO students and design the entire rain garden. So, the classes that Steve was teaching, he came and brought his UNO students to our sixth grade classroom. It's a very crowded, full classroom. Those college students helped our sixth graders learn about how you design something from start to finish, and then our sixth graders got to go to UNO to experience what a college day is like. They came back saying, "I never thought I would be able to be on a college campus. I never thought I would be able to do something like this." And so, from start to finish, these sixth graders, along with the UNO service learning, landscape appreciation students, designed an entire, from blueprint to completion, everything from, you know, the blueprint to the stepping stones to the planting of all of the plants. So, we have seen it from the very beginnings and to completion, and so if you ever drive on Maple, you'll see our rain garden right there on Maple, and it's been just a beautiful, beautiful experience for us. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thomas Lee, principal of Northwest High School, and I brought my rock star with me, so I'm not going to talk very long because she's the one that's doing all the work. She's an outstanding teacher in our horticulture program and our plants program, science teacher, and she has done a tremendous job, and so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Rachel Burns.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee. I teach plants and propagation, advanced horticulture at Northwest High School, and my students have been working with Steve Rhodey's environmental sustainability students to develop rain gardens for our campus that collect stormwater runoff from our nearby greenhouse and parking lots. The reason we really love this project is it allows my high school students to really develop their STEM skills and to become citizen scientists for the community. It allows them to be part of real-life science that solves a local problem within their neighborhoods, such as the stormwater pollution, the stormwater runoff that goes into the drains. The students took these skills and they signed up for a Samsung Solve For Tomorrow contest in which they won state, and they competed nationally and won $20,000 worth of Samsung technology for their school, and it also gave them a lot of pride within this competition. They also developed a lot of 21st century skills such as communication, public speaking. They were allowed to present a lot of green tours as well as at UNO. They also had the opportunity to network, so now Steve Rhodey has allowed them to develop a community garden for UNO's campus that will be built next year, which is really exciting for the students. And they also had the ability to write grants to help pay for these projects. The project has also been great because it's also multi-curricular, so we've asked some of the other classes within our school to help participate and have more of a buy-in for this project. So, we have our art classes, which are going to be decorating the walkways and the rain barrels that are going to be within the rain garden. Our biology and environmental science classes are also going to be developing inquiry labs to look at the biodiversity within the gardens. And lastly, I love the project because it not only transforms my students' learning, but it transforms my teaching. It forces me to really look at what is the best way to teach science to these students? What is the best way to prepare them for college? It allows me to develop better inquiry labs, in which in turns allows my students to become better prepared, not only for college, but to be better citizens within their communities. Thank you.
We've given you just a sampling and would like you to come to our celebration. It's April 28. We're recognizing the outstanding work, 18,500 students in the last five years engaged in hands-on, community-based projects. Again, my thanks to this team as well as all the other schools participating.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or any further? Well, thanks. That was great information for us to receive about things that are happening with our students and through UNO, so thank you very much for being here and sharing that with us. With that, we are going to move on to board and superintendent communications, so Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of items. I wanted to, again, congratulate all the students. I was here on Sunday for the Haci Awards, which is the Hispanic Achievement Awards, and we had a group of well over 200 young people and their families that were recognized for the success they're having and where they're headed as they go on past their senior year and on to colleges. Pretty impressive event. Also, I wanted just to mention, if you've got an opportunity to go visit Ponca, we are still on schedule and under budget to finish that project, and it actually is coming out even better than I could have imagined, Dr. Turnquist. It's just phenomenal, and it's exciting to see one of our first major renovation projects come to fruition. So, if you get a chance, go visit it. It'll be finished this summer, and our kids will all be back in the regular setting starting this fall. Also, I wanted to do a special thanks for our Career Center meeting. Mr. Scanlon joined us. We had business leaders from across the metro area looking at where we want to go, potentially with a future bond issue to build a facility and some of those needs, and certainly it's something we'll come back to the school board in the future with, but clearly this community values that certification's important to. It's not just a four-year degree. Young people that go to school and become a certified CATIA programmer, a certified CAD programmer, a welder, a certified electrician, all good occupations if that's what the young person chooses, and we're trying to impress upon them the opportunities that we currently have, but also talk about what we can do in the future. So, thank you for the opportunity, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone have any board reports for this evening? I have a cup. Oh, go ahead, Lacey. Ms. America?
Just a couple of things. Thank you for excusing me from the last meeting. I was representing our district at the Legislative Policy Meeting for the Council of Great City Schools, and it brought back a lot of information about the new ESSA legislation that was passed federally that I am literally still putting, trying to put together a brief write-up for you guys of things we need to be aware at the state level because it was that information packed. And I also wanted to give you guys a heads up if you were not able to go to the kickoff ceremony on Saturday. The Artist-to-Artist Art Show is going on right now at Hot Shops. It's an annual event where OPS art teachers display art that they've made, not as an art teacher, but as an artist, showcasing their talents that they have, and it is always just really neat to go through and look at the different talents that our art teachers have that they harness to benefit our students as well. So, that is going on at Hot Shops through April 24, and if you guys have not checked it out yet, I really suggest that you do.
Okay, thank you. Well, I want to thank the Blair Community Schools. The middle school there hosted a middle school honors band, which included students from Lincoln and Skylar and Norfolk and just the entire eastern portion of the state, and five of our middle schools were able to participate as well, and our students were there. It was one of the most amazing middle school band concerts I think I've ever been to, so I just want to thank our band instructors who took students and left early in the morning and spent the entire day working with our students and working with the guest conductors that were there as well. So, that was, that's one item, and then the second one is the van meter, day van meter baseball tournament is always the first weekend in April, and so I want to congratulate Burke for winning the trophy this year and for having just an awesome tournament. It was a little bit cold, but it was great to watch all of our OPS schools perform and play against each other, and it's always such a nice opportunity. So, I want to thank the coaches as well and all of the work that North and Bryan did to host that tournament. With that, I think that might be it. I don't see anyone else, so with that, we will move on to public comment and recognition. Our first public comment is from Brian Beebe. Please state your name, the spelling of your last name, and your address, and then you'll have five minutes to speak, and Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute left or when you have 30 seconds left.
Just like the debates?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Brian Beebe, B-R-I-A-N-B-E-E-B-E, and I live at 2020 South 183rd Circle in Omaha, and my wife and I own a property described here as a 60th and L area that you're proposing to purchase. It's called J60 Court LLC, and we have been in negotiations with you since probably November, I think, or December, and we have not agreed yet upon a price, and we fully intend to do so. We have no intention of trying to hold the district hostage to sell the property, however, we believe that the price that is being offered, based on the relocation company's appraisal and fair market value in terms of replacing it, are a little bit apart yet, and so we're stuck at that spot right now, and we would like to have further negotiation with you. But along with that, I do want to talk to you about the relocation company and your slide earlier. I was, I got in here earlier to see the description of that.
Good evening, everyone. Thomas Lee, Principal of Northwest High School. And I brought my rock star with me, so I'm not going to talk very long because she's the one that's doing all the work. She's an outstanding teacher in our horticulture program and our plants program, science teacher, and she has done a tremendous job. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Rachel Burns.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee. I teach plants and propagation advanced horticulture at Northwest High School. And my students have been working with Steve Rhodey's environmental sustainability students to develop rain gardens for our campus that collect stormwater runoff from our nearby greenhouse and parking lots. The reason we really love this project is it allows my high school students to really develop their STEM skills and to become citizen scientists for the community. It allows them to be part of real-life science that solves a local problem within their neighborhoods, such as the stormwater pollution, the stormwater runoff that goes into the drains. The students took these skills and they signed up for a Samsung Solve For Tomorrow contest in which they won state and they competed nationally and won $20,000 worth of Samsung technology for their school. And it also gave them a lot of pride within this competition. They also developed a lot of 21st century skills such as communication, public speaking. They were allowed to present at a lot of green tours as well as at UNO. They also had the opportunity to network. So now Steve Rhodey has allowed them to develop a community garden for UNO's campus that will be built next year, which is really exciting for the students. And they also have the ability to write grants to help pay for these projects. The project has also been great because it's also multi-curricular. So we've asked some of the other classes within our school to help participate and have more of a buy-in for this project. So we have our art classes, which are going to be decorating the walkways and the rain barrels that are going to be within the rain garden. Our biology and environmental science classes are also going to be developing inquiry labs to look at the biodiversity within the gardens. And lastly, I love the project because it not only transforms my students' learning, but it transforms my teaching. It forces me to really look at what is the best way to teach science to these students? What is the best way to prepare them for college? It allows me to develop better inquiry labs, which in turns allows my students to become better prepared, not only for college, but to be better citizens within their communities. Thank you.
We've given you just a sampling and would like you to come to our celebration. It's April 28th. We're recognizing the outstanding work, 18,500 students in the last five years engaged in hands-on, community-based projects. Again, my thanks to this team as well as all the other schools participating.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or any further? Well, thanks. That was great information for us to receive about things that are happening with our students and through UNO. So thank you very much for being here and sharing that with us. With that, we are going to move on to board and superintendent communications. So, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of items. I wanted to, again, congratulate all the students. I was here on Sunday for the Hasi Awards, which is the Hispanic Achievement Awards. And we had a group of well over 200 young people and their families that were recognized for the success they're having and where they're headed as they go on past their senior year and on to colleges. Pretty impressive event. Also wanted just to mention, if you've got an opportunity to go visit Ponca, we are still on schedule and under budget to finish that project. And it actually is coming out even better than I could have imagined, Dr. Turnquist. It's just phenomenal. And it's exciting to see one of our first major renovation projects come to fruition. So if you get a chance, go visit it. It'll be finished this summer and our kids will all be back in the regular setting starting this fall. Also wanted to do a special thanks for our Career Center meeting. Mr. Scanlon joined us. We had business leaders from across the metro area looking at where we want to go, potentially with a future bond issue, to build a facility and some of those needs. And certainly it's something we'll come back to the school board in the future with. But clearly, this community values that certification's important too. It's not just a four-year degree. Young people that go to school and become a certified CATIA programmer, a certified CAD programmer, a welder, a certified electrician, all good occupations if that's what the young person chooses. And we're trying to impress upon them the opportunities that we currently have, but also talk about what we can do in the future. So, thank you for the opportunity, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone have any board reports for this evening? I have a cup... Oh, go ahead, Lacey. Ms. Merrick?
Just a couple of things. Thank you for excusing me from the last meeting. I was representing our district at the Legislative Policy Meeting for the Council of Great City Schools. And it brought back a lot of information about the new ESSA legislation that was passed federally that I am literally still putting, trying to put together a brief write-up for you guys of things we need to be aware at the state level because it was that information pact. And I also wanted to give you guys a heads up, if you were not able to go to the kickoff ceremony on Saturday. The Artist-to-Teacher-to-Artist art show is going on right now at Hot Shops. It's an annual event where OPS art teachers display art that they've made, not as an art teacher, but as an artist, showcasing their talents that they have. And it is always just really neat to go through and look at the different talents that our art teachers have that they harness to benefit our students as well. So that is going on at Hot Shops through April 24th. And if you guys have not checked it out yet, I really suggest that you do.
Okay, thank you. Well, I want to thank the Blair Community Schools. The middle school there hosted a middle school honors band, which included students from Lincoln and Skylar and Norfolk and just the entire eastern portion of the state. And five of our middle schools were able to participate as well, and our students were there. It was one of the most amazing middle school band concerts I think I've ever been to. So I just want to thank our band instructors who took students and left early in the morning and spent the entire day working with our students and working with the guest conductors that were there as well. So that was, that's one item. And then the second one is the van meter, day van meter. Baseball tournament is always the first weekend in April. And so I want to congratulate Burke for winning the trophy this year and for having just an awesome tournament. It was a little bit cold, but it was great to watch all of our OPS schools perform and play against each other. And it's always such a nice opportunity. So, want to thank the coaches as well and all of the work that North and Bryan did to host that tournament. With that, I think that might be it. I don't see anyone else. So with that, we will move on to public comment and recognition. Our first public comment is from Brian Beebe. Please state your name, the spelling of your last name, and your address. And then you'll have five minutes to speak. And Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute left or when you have 30 seconds left.
Just like the debates.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Brian Beebe, B-R-I-A-N-B-E-E-B-E. And I live at 2020 South 183rd Circle in Omaha. And my wife and I own a property described here as the 60th and L area that you're proposing to purchase. It's called J60 Court LLC. And we have been in negotiations with you since probably November, I think, or December. And we have not agreed yet upon a price. And we fully intend to do so. We have no intention of trying to hold the district hostage to sell the property. However, we believe that the price that is being offered, based on the relocation company's appraisal and fair market value in terms of replacing it, are a little bit apart yet. And so we're stuck at that spot right now. And we would like to have further negotiation with you. But along with that, I do want to talk to you about the relocation company and your slide earlier. I was, I got in here earlier to see the description of that segment for tonight. It talked about negotiating in good faith. Contacting our tenants in December and setting up a meeting with them to talk about transitioning them out of the property before we've been contacted and met with by your representative is not good faith. And receiving a call from KETV today at 4:00 asking us if we would make comment about the fact that our property is going to be the subject of eminent domain tonight is not good faith. Maybe I'm wrong, but I think somebody should have told us that we're on the agenda tonight. So, that said, go now. Mr. Evans, thank you. Ms. Turnquist, thank you for your comments prior to the meeting. I appreciate that very much. That said, we look forward to further conversation with you on the subject. And in closing, ask that you make sure that you're aware of the information that we have submitted in terms of our feeling about the property and the value of the property and our justification in asking for more money than is presently being offered. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Keith Station. And you'll have five minutes to speak. If you'll please state your name, the spelling of your last name, and your address. And then Mr. Ray will keep you informed.
Thank you. Keith Station, S-T-A-T-I-O-N, 16716 Grand Avenue. And I'm here on behalf of Heartland Workforce Solutions at 5752 Ames Avenue. The mission of Heartland Workforce Solutions is to connect job seekers to businesses. It's very simple. And we do that through a collective impact model. And I'm here today to talk to you about how pleased I am with the district's Economic Inclusion Program that we were fortunate enough to be a part of. So, Dr. Turnquist's vision and Carlos Cozart's execution of the partnership is what I'm so pleased with. They approached us with an opportunity to partner with our subcontractor, Goodwill Industries, to create a marketplace, if you will, an informational setting for small and emerging businesses and contractors and those interested in taking advantage of work in the community. And so through that process, we were able to develop a couple of programs and work with them to execute a couple of programs at Heartland Workforce Solutions and at Goodwill Industries's headquarters. And I would characterize those events as very successful and very useful and just about the right thing to do. I'm proud of the small and emerging businesses in our community. I'm proud of our partnership. And I'm proud of the district for allowing us to be a part of this kind of opportunity. So thank you again, Dr. Turnquist. Thank you, Mr. Cozart, for your help. I would encourage us all to continue to ask, why not? I would continue to be inclusive-minded in our approach. And let's see what we can accomplish next. I'm grateful, thank you. And I'm excited to see where this momentum will take us as we generate awareness for the opportunities in OPS and also to involve the businesses in our community who are looking for opportunities. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Ernie Boykin. Please state your name, the spelling of your last name, and your address.
Ernie Boykin, B-O-Y-K-I-N, 7051 Crown Point Avenue. To the Board President, Board Members, and Superintendent of Schools. I first want to say that there are a lot of things that OPS does well, and there's some things that you don't do so well. And when you don't, people approach me. That's why I'm here. At Easter time, I was approached by parents who have a problem with the evaluation process that you have for principals, program directors, and to find out if their children are safe in school. You're asking parents and/or guardians to go online and conduct a survey or complete a survey to give you that information. I did call the HR department. They didn't return my call, so here I am. The problem that some parents have is that they have computers at home, but they have no access to the Internet. We have some parents that work two jobs and they would like to know when they would be able to complete this survey. We also have individuals who know how important the evaluation is, but they're left out simply because they don't have access to the Internet. I had a parent who did get online to conduct the survey, to complete the survey. She completed it on her laptop and then went into another room and completed the survey on her desktop. So I don't think that you're going to get the information that you need by having people go online. It is going to be skewed. This process has been changed again. And so, parents are wanting to know why you can't have a questionnaire given to them when they have their parent-teacher conference so that the majority of them can take part in the evaluation of principals, program directors, people that affect the lives of their children that they have in the school. You're eliminating a large portion of the parents by the way that you're asking the evaluations to be completed. And again, I went in this evening. I was able to start the survey and I deleted it on my laptop, went into my home office and got online on the desktop and was able to start the survey. So I don't think that you're going to get the information that you need legitimately to evaluate these individuals that you want to evaluate. When requesting the way that you gather the information, parents and guardians say that there are things that they would like to say that they won't probably be able to say on the computer. Many of them, like I said, one school has one-third of their population that has Internet access. And they are astonished that the district at this time does not know that they don't have access. In other words, the communication between the parent, the principal, and the district is lacking. Because if you knew that only a third of the school had access to the Internet, you probably wouldn't ask them to get online to do a survey about individuals that impact the education and the futures of their children. We would like to know if you would consider doing a questionnaire
One minute.
...to the parents at parent-teacher conferences so that you can get the information that you need so that changes can be made. They don't know that you really want to know how the principals are doing because of the way you've set this up. And I told them I don't think that's the case. But if you could do something during parent-teacher conference, we could impact more people. You'd get the information that you need. Maybe some of the less effective administrators would not stay in office as long as they do in the schools. Again, we're talking about children and their needs, and parents want to make sure that they're met. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Evans, could you please just follow back up and then maybe share with the board what the processes are and what's available? Great, thank you. With that, we are going to move on to the consent agenda. We have a lot of items on there. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
So, motion by Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fay. Are there any abstentions? Mrs. Underwood.
I will be abstaining from item I-6.
Any others? All right. So, motion by Ms. Williams, a second by Mrs. Fay, with Mrs. Underwood abstaining from I-6. Roll call, please.
Cotton.
Aye.
Merrick.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Seven I.
Motion carries. With that, we will move on to information items. First on the agenda is J1A, Committees of the Board Update. The Accountability and the Budget and Audit Committee are scheduled to be meeting soon. The Communications Committee met on March 29th. And Mr. Ray sent out a board calendar that we've been working diligently on. If you didn't think you got it, check your clutter box. That's where mine went. So, take a look there. I just want to emphasize to everyone that that's a working document. It's always changing. So if what we're doing at Board Officers is we're trying to put items on that we either are aware would be an annual item or something that we are aware of is coming up. But it's constantly changing. As Mr. Ray knows, I think he changes the calendar for us almost on a daily basis. So, you may see something, but then it may move. So it's not necessarily set in stone until it's on the agenda. But I wanted to make everybody aware of that. The other thing that we're currently working on is a board handbook. And we had asked Mr. Ray to take a look at some other board handbooks out there. And so he's looked at a number of them, including the Texas Association of School Boards, the DeKalb County School District, Dayton Public Schools, and the Prince George's County Board of Education, as well as some other Board of Education handbooks. So we're kind of looking at formats and trying to come up with something that would be a document that we can share as a Board of Education and that would be helpful as new board members come on as well. So we're, we've asked him to make a number of just simple changes. And so he's working on that. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring you back that document soon. But you should have the calendar now. Policy Committee is scheduled for April 12th. Americanism, we had an update last time. Mrs. Underwood, the Student Assignment Plan.
Yeah, so I had to run out and grab my notes real quick. I left them in my bag. So, the Student Assignment Plan Committee met last Tuesday. And we just got an update from staff in regards to very targeted communication to those families that will be affected by the new student assignment plan, which will be implemented in the fall of '17. Just trying to make sure that those families that fall outside of what will become the new partner zone as part of the new student assignment plan, that they've been very clearly and consistently communicated to so that they understand the changes that will be taking place. And that they, while they are receiving transportation under the current plan, they may not be receiving transportation under the new plan. So we got an update on that. And then they also, staff went through for us, school selection prioritization, which I thought was a nice, kind of concise and clear way of explaining how we are prioritizing student placement under the new plan. As you know, under the current plan, it's based on free and reduced lunch and siblings and so forth. And so they kind of walked through kind of like a four-bulleted item. And I'll just go through those real quick. First is neighborhood school. There are guaranteed placements for all kids at neighborhood schools. Second priority is siblings. Third priority are students residing in the partner zone. And then fourth priority are students residing outside the partner zone. And there's some more language to that. And if anyone would like that description emailed to them, I'm sure Matt Ray could get that to them. But it was just kind of a nice, very clear list for how prioritization will be handled under the new student assignment plan. Am I missing anything? Okay.
Mrs. Fay.
I have a question. Under the prioritization, is it, if you are, if you're in the partner zone, is it still based on capacity?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And so it's possible that you live in the partner zone and want to opt into a school, but it's closed because neighborhood students have filled it up.
That's right. Yep.
Okay. And capacity is set. There's no, if I recall, there's no state, there's no law around capacity. It's set by the districts, I think, set by each individual school district. Isn't that right? Because when the, that was one of the things that came up during the Learning Community when it was developed was what is capacity? Is that, that's right, Justin, isn't it? So it's kind of subjective, is all I'm saying. I just think it's something we need to watch because what we don't want to end up with is schools that are really, while maybe in policy, they're open. In reality, they're all just closed neighborhood schools, and we lose all the diversity and all the opportunity for diversity because we're not, we're just not watching those things. And because capacity is subjective and is set by the districts and there's not any kind of governance over what is a school that's a capacity and what's not, I just think it's something to be aware of. I won't be here when that plan goes into effect, but I hope that future boards keep an eye on that. Because we could end up with, we could end up with very segregated schools.
Mm-hmm.
Unintentionally.
Right. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. And I think it is also probably worth mentioning, just as a reminder to the public, that the partner zone is set up based on geographic areas that kind of represent different socioeconomic areas. So it's kind of set up to address, while we're not prioritizing free and reduced lunch, we're not prioritizing integration based on free and reduced lunch. We're prioritizing integration based on geographic areas. So I just want to make sure, that wasn't mentioned explicitly in my list. So I just want to make sure that the, that it's clear that the partner zones were set up based on those geographic kind of differences across the city.
There's no other questions? I don't believe we've had any construction manager at risk, I don't think. The Specialty Schools Review and Recommendations Committee is scheduled for April 12th. I know we have an update on CBOC, so I don't know, Mr. Scanlon, if you can just wait until that point? Okay. And Code of Conduct, I don't believe, has met. So, I think that's an update on our committees unless anyone has any questions. All right. Next, we're going to move to item J1B, which is the CBOC update.
My name is Lenora Isom, and I'm a member of the CBOC Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. I wanted to first of all thank the board and OPS faculty and administration and volunteers. I have a daughter at Sunny Slope. She's a first grader. She's on the floor back there reading Calvin and Hobbes. So, I'm proud to send my child to OPS, and I'm just thankful for all that you do. And I know a lot of people want to talk about things that maybe aren't going right, but you need to hear that a lot of things are going really well, and I appreciate your work. I also want to thank you for the position, the opportunity to serve on the CBOC. It's been really, really great, informative for me. I hope that I'm adding some things to the discussion. I'm told that I do, so I hope that that's right. My point of view on the board or the committee is as an architect. I think I'm the only licensed architect. licensed architect on the Committee, and so I can bring a perspective to the other folks regarding project phasing, mobilization of contractors and subcontractors, and maybe why some things on the schedule move around because of that. So, you know, I hope that that helps, and I think that it does. We do have transparency of information at those meetings, which I know is one of the main goals of this group. We have an open conversation, we ask questions, we, you know, we digress very often, so that's good, because we're kind of talking about what is on people's minds that day. A few things that I want to touch on, and it's actually fitting, based on Mr. Station's public comments earlier, we've talked a lot about the Tier One and Tier Two, and all the economic inclusion lately, and I think the thought is that, yes, it's seen as a very positive thing, it's going well, it's becoming more and more successful. One of the things that I was able to add in the beginning is, you know, as you ramp up and you're just in the design phase, it's harder to meet those percentages, those goals, because in the design industry, there aren't many Tier One, Tier Two companies that have the manpower to do these types of design projects. So, I was able to kind of mention, you know, we're not going to hit that number consistently the whole time, you're going to kind of see it as a bell curve, and I think we're starting to see that now as those numbers increase. One thing, you know, in relation to that, I think we need to make sure that when we do get into the construction phases, and we get these small businesses in, that part of this goal is to also support and, you know, help these small business owners deal with the different kinds of regulations, and things that they need to do to stay successful, so that this is just a part of our, just the percentages of these types of businesses in our region, so that it doesn't need to be such an effort, and I think that's the ultimate goal, is the growth and support of these small business owners. One thing that came up in our conversation at the last meeting, there was a little bit of confusion, or maybe different opinions or ideas on the level of design for the new schools in this current bond issue, and I'm sure that's probably going to be discussed, there's been lots of good emails going back and forth, and just making sure that everyone's on the same page as far as what is in this current bond issue, getting the new schools, not only the land procurement, but also what level of design we're getting to. So, I'm sure that that is something that the CBOC at the next meeting would like to have an update on, so that we can give good, consistent, positive information to the public. That'll make everyone feel, you know, more secure and good about the next bond, which is really one of my big goals, because I don't want us to procure land for a really great field day, I'd like to see some new school buildings on them. And with that, I also want to commend you on the range of members that you've brought to the CBOC. We really have a lot of diverse points of view on the Committee, and that really helps, you know, when things come up and they start to talk about bond sales and coupon rates, I start thinking about grocery shopping. So, you know, that's my experience with coupons, I'm learning a lot, as far as how that applies to a bond issue, and so it's a learning experience for me as well, and I thank you for allowing me to go on this journey with you. So, thank you very much. You have any questions?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No, we're just, we're very thankful for everyone who's been so willing to step up and make that monthly commitment, and help get the positive word out about the work that's being done. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
So, now we'll call Mr. Summers up, who has the bond program update, I think.
Indeed, I do. Yes, I do have an update tonight, it's time we do a quarterly update, give everybody on the Board some of the milestones that we've been working through over the past few months. We're going to touch on a few highlights. As always, I like to kind of underscore a few of the challenges that we are currently facing, and some that we will continue to face. We also have a few photos, as Mr. Evans mentioned, I have a couple photos of Ponca and some of the progress there. And then, as these presentations continue, we'll continue to add photos of some good before and afters to really illustrate all the good work that's happening. So, we'll do a quick overview, of course, I'll touch on some of the economic inclusion measurements. I wanted to pull some of the bid and award information, I know there was some correspondence going around about that, so I wanted to provide a little bit more of an overview on the number of bid efforts over the last month or so, and the results of those bid efforts for this group. The program, of course, again, is on budget, on schedule. We continue to monitor both of them very closely, of course, with a lot of disclosure to the CBOC group, any others that ask for that. Zero incidences with students or any workers on site, so we continue to work through potential near misses, and as work continues to increase, that's going to become a challenge, the more folks you have on site, the more activities, the more difficult that can be. So, we're working really hard to ensure the community understands the safety culture that we want to have. Eighty-three total projects, seventy-one of those are active, twenty-five in design, so still the large portion of work is in the design, that number continues to come down a little bit, and then we continue to add more projects. So, over the next several months, that'll remain fairly consistent at that twenty-five. You can see there, there's twelve in the bid and award stage, and that really has to do with several of the projects that we'll talk about here in a moment. Seven under construction, eight in closeout, and nineteen that have been completed. And many of the nineteen, again, are from the Quick Start, or they're the small infrastructure scopes that we did early on in the bond program. You can see on the right-hand side there, again, just some measurements that we continue to monitor. Let me see if I can blow that up a little bit, that better. So far in the program, we've written commitments, or the district has written commitments of sixty-six point eight million dollars, so that continues to tick up, that's about fifteen percent of the total program. And of that sixty-six point eight million dollars, thirty-one million of that has been actually written in checks and paid out to the vendors. Always like to give a quick update on the program contingency, it's a large topic of conversation, of course, in CBOC, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knew, we're still trending well below the budget of nine percent, we're committing, or we forecasted and got an approval for about three million dollars of that to date. So, we really like where that contingency is being utilized, again, to make sure committed scope's being done, but of course, on the front end, we want to make sure that we're not utilizing it in these large, major waves of usage. So, we've been able to utilize it where we've had some overages, and then where we've had underruns, we've been able to return that back in, and that was a, that's how the financial model of the bond program as a whole is set up to do. And we have a little bit of an example of how that works here coming up shortly. Economic inclusion, so so far to date, contracts that apply to the economic inclusion program, there's been about fifty-nine million dollars of contracts written, and about six point six million of that have gone to Tier One and Tier Two contractors. So, currently, that's at eleven percent, it's eleven percent trend, and I will say it's about a three or four percent increase from a couple of months ago, largely in part into the Franklin Award, the general contractor there did a very good job of economic inclusion. Lund Ross has done a very good job at the Indian Hill site, and then McCarthy also did a very good job on our recent procurement in regards to the Beveridge project. So, not only are we getting inclusion, where we thought we'd have good success with our CMR partners and the strategies they're utilizing, but we're also getting it really in the public bid market, which is the hardest arena to control pretty much anything in. So, really, really happy about the results as it relates to that. These next couple of slides, don't want to, unless you want me to read every single bullet, I won't, but I just wanted to show, this is about forty-five action items over the last three months that the Board has gone through and approved. So, whole lot of activities ranging from substantial completion of some of the early infrastructure, smaller projects, guaranteed maximum prices being established, award of bids, construction documents, site procurement, all of the things that make the bond program go, you know, on a month-to-month basis, we're getting approval here at the Board to continue to do that. So, just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of all the things that are happening at the Board level, to make sure that the bond program continues to run smoothly ahead. On the next slide here, with the bid and award information, not going to analyze any particular one, but what I wanted to show here is that we're still getting competitive bids, and it's not easy, I can tell you, we're ringing the phones a lot, we're talking to the contractors, we're trying to determine, like Lenora mentioned, what's the phasing need to be, how much do we need to do this summer compared to next summer, and really everywhere in between, and our teams are really trying to make sure that we're having good, across-the aisle kind of dialogue with the prime contractors. We're also trying to make sure, we're also making sure we're not interrupting any of the procurement strategies, or any of the processes that are there. So, much before, or long before the project goes out to bid, we're having those conversations, again, to set up the phasing. Where we got unoccupied sites, and we can turn the whole project over, every contractor's chasing those, or not every, but a lot of them. So, in our phased projects, we're really having to work on strategically setting those up. But I also wanted, so we're getting coverage on contracts, if we do have a project like Jocelyn, for example, where we receive no bids, we have carved out some windows of time over the next couple of months where we can get a project back in for rebid. So, when we do, when we do receive the no bid, again, I mentioned talking to the prime contractors, talking with the architect and the engineers of record, trying to find out from all these different angles, what can we do to the project, was it just purely a timing issue of, hey, there's five other projects and they were all easier? Sometimes it's just that, the way it shakes out with all of the work in the marketplace. So, but we do feel, you know, the strategy we're implementing, and the sequence of all the work we're trying to procure, we're seeing some success, and it's shown here by really on that far-right bottom column of the two point one million dollars. So, that's showing us, we are getting competitive bids in the marketplace, projects are coming in under budget, and where we do have projects, for example, on Lothup that did come in a little bit over budget, we have the funds inside of the program to cover those things to meet the committed scope. So, again, I just, I know there was some conversation about that, and I wanted to make sure that the Board's comfortable with the processes that we're using and the strategies to try to maximize the competitive coverage we can in the marketplace. Over the next ninety days, these challenges, I think I've had on for the last few different presentations, because they largely remain the same, there's not a lot of shift in the marketplace, so we're continuing to try to coordinate our most current, our most recent procurement activities. Still twenty-five projects in design, so trying to coordinate all the delivery of those design packages, and then, of course, planning work for this summer. We've been able to do some stuff over spring break to try to help soften that, but it's usually a pretty big inrush of activity. We really work closely to coordinate that with the Safety and Environmental Group. And then, long-term, I'd like to say, you know, that this bid effort would be the toughest, but we're going to have active projects this next bid cycle, which would be a year from now, so the contractors that are currently working on your guys' sites and others, we're going to be asking them to bid more projects, so there's going to be some challenges long-term, unless something dramatically changes in the marketplace, which is, we're not seeing, but I think we'll have good success on relationships, and success we can build on on the current projects, so that should help. We continue to move the program forward quickly. I believe Burke High's architectural selection was approved tonight, that was the most recent, and then we're working on Oak Valley and Gilder, I believe, so in the next couple of months, you'll see those here for architectural approval as well. And then, the other big thing we try to make sure is when we mobilize construction contractors on the site, you know, we do that swiftly, we don't kind of linger to the project, we really make sure we have a good plan that's thought out, work with the principal, and when it's time to start working, mobilize, we really put a lot of pressure on the contractor to do that, just because we feel like if we start well, you know, we can end with a lot of good success. Then I just have a couple of photos. On the left-hand side, this is Ponca Elementary, at the top, it's the before, and on the bottom, it's the after, you can see the front addition there to give them a little bit more, not a little bit more, a significantly more pronounced front entry, and part of that was needed to satisfy the need on the right-hand side, which is the inside of the building at the front entry. So, we moved the front desk around to provide them visibility down the corridor, and also to the front door, so that work was done around the site security perspective. And then also, if you can kind of see across, there's a green frame, one of the things that they wanted at their site was a small breakout conference room, it really wasn't a program from an academic piece, so we really worked hard on utilizing, there's an ADA, a ramp that goes around the backside of it, and this was just going to be a void really in the space. So, we worked, Kenaton worked on this design, really came up with a unique way to kind of use that space to satisfy a need. A couple of other ones, the North High Card Access and Security work, that's all been completed, and then Blackburn on the right-hand side there, you can see they did a lot of fire life safety, so not a new entry or anything like that, but you can see where the new ceiling and lights and those things are in. So, wanted to give a couple of snapshots over the next couple of months, as the major renovations and buildings are tore down, and I think we'll be able to provide some fun visuals for that. Then a couple other quick ones, here's Edison and Masters, and really what we're showing here is, this is where the new safe areas are going to be built. So, in some of these smaller schools where the existing structure just cannot be fortified at an economical rate to create a safe area for the students, the decision's been made to put a small addition on to satisfy that need. So, in many of these types of structure, we're doing small additions to accomplish that. So, that's all I have for this evening, if there's any questions, I can...
Does anyone have any questions? Mrs. Underwood.
I just have a couple of questions. So, just high level, if you know off the top of your head, so, sorry, of the twenty-five there in design, I know we have a lot of kind of big ones that are starting construction this summer, how many of those twenty-five are actually starting this summer? Do you know off the top of your head?
I would say eight to ten.
Okay, yeah, so that's pretty significant, and they're, like I said, they're some of the big ones, so.
Right, right.
That'll be...
Yeah, Bell Ryan's, for example, we're going to procure that construction work in May, and it's the single largest project in the bond program, so twenty-five to twenty-seven million. So, there are some substantial, Bell Ryan's, fifteen million roughly, Western Hills in the fifteen million dollar range, so there are a lot of significant design projects that are finishing that are going into that bid and award piece. And then, some of the design ones that will carry on are a little bit smaller, that will happen next summer, so.
Right, okay, sounds good, thank you. And then, I had one more thing, and this is more like forecasting for the future, but I noticed on, and more probably for staff than necessarily for Jacobs, but I noticed on, I think it was the CBOC report, like Bell Ryan and Western Hills were, are projected to be over budget, and one of the reasons for that is site development costs, and it seems like those site development costs are always underestimated in the initial budget. And I say that just because we've got, in OPS, we have a lot of kind of existing sites and existing buildings that we're purchasing, that we're either renovating, or in most cases, tearing down the existing buildings and regrading and rebuilding. So, just maybe to keep that in mind when we're budgeting for future bonds, especially when we have two new high schools coming up, you know, sometimes it's impossible to get it closer, but, you know, if there's any way to maybe just think a little bit more about those kind of site development costs, and maybe we can bring things kind of even more in budget, even though I realize we don't really have a budget issue at this time, I just kind of wanted to mention that specifically with Bell Ryan and Western Hills, I noticed.
Mr. Scanlon.
I guess just echoing some of what Katie was talking about, could you go back to slide seven, please? Could you, just being on the CBOC, you see a lot of changing numbers based off the design, the scope of the work, and as we go through, you guys, Jacobs, are, you're estimating what you think the project would cost, could you just kind of explain to the public where you're coming up with your numbers, and then that we might... and then that we might be projected as, as far as a number of those up there to be, you know, possibly over budget than what we had expected, but then we come in under budget when it goes up and we get a hard number as far as bid day?
Sure, so I guess I can walk through some of the process and then I can maybe point out like a difference in the Franklin and Lothrup, for example. But the process that's currently utilized, again, the CMR creates a little bit of a different delivery because they're largely responsible for the estimating portion. But in the hard bid or in the public bid projects, Jacobs does an independent estimate. We utilize the expertise of the architect as well to do estimating at the different stages of the projects. And then we're, we're comparing that information to the scope of work that's been committed to, to make sure that, hey, are the estimator seeing the same scope of work that we said we were going to do? Largely what happens initially on projects is everything, you know, in the world wants to get gobbled up inside of this project budget and then we have to work to kind of make sure we can keep all the programs, but we need to make sure that they're in budget. The example between Franklin and Lothrup, really the difference that we're seeing there, a large portion of that is a result of the safe area. And we've talked about this in CBAC, but I think it's a good example of when the bond program is, is budgeted, there's the idea or the, the scope of work of having a safe area, but no structural analysis is done on any building. So for example, at Lothrup, the, the work it's going to take to make a safe area at their site is much more extensive than it is at Franklin. So at Lothrup, the, the existing building has virtually, I don't want to say none, but it doesn't have any of the characteristics that a FEMA 360 rated facility needs to have. So we have to tear out a lot of the existing structure and basically bring it all new. At Franklin, there's components of the existing building that structurally meet that need, but we have to put a new, you know, concrete deck on it. So the cost of work is totally different, even though the end result is the same scope of work. So that's, that's one area in, in all of these projects that is a variable, again, because when you budget them, they're all budgeted very similar, because at a safe area level, when you're putting your assessment together for a bond program or even a facility study, you're not diving down in and having a structural analysis done on the facility. So that's why there's a variance between like a Franklin and Lothrup where it's an open to close concept facility. I believe Lothrup also needed some additional work at the entry from a secure building perspective to move some things around to make sure that it could achieve the security necessary. But that's, that's the balance of, of looking at projects that are in theory identical, we're going from open to closed, we should just be in there putting walls in and everything else is the same. But the reality is the buildings are all different. Even, even the MEP systems are trying to analyze, this might be a great solution for this facility here, but this one's probably better because of the space you have in the crawl space or because of the ceiling space. So each one's a little bit different, but when you're, when you're putting together a whole financial model or the budgeting for the bond program, you're, you're not diving into each one of those parts and pieces at that time of budgeting. So as we continue to hone in on those, and at CBAC, we talk a lot about this, about that forecasting piece of, we see the scope of work growing or we're concerned about masons in the marketplace because we're doing, there's a lot of blocks going up all over the city. We want to make sure that we're advising everybody as soon as we can, hey, we might have a budget, you know, budget transfer need here. Or we think that this one is going to run in a little bit under. We're usually first to come and say a project's going to be over and we're slow to come in and say, hey, we saved all this money. Because again, we really want to make sure that we, we meet all the scope, you know, that the district finishes all the committed scope, the principal's comfortable with the final results, the community, et cetera. So we kind of trickle projects in on the clothes outside of, if you will, to really make sure all the bases are touched. And on the front end, we're, we're trying to be proactive about communicating about potential overages.
Thank you very much. That was, that was a great explanation because I look at those two buildings and wonder what's different. So thank you very much.
Sure.
Does anyone else have any questions? Great. If not, thank you so much for being here this evening and for presenting.
Got it.
With that, we actually now move to J2A. First item is legislative update. I'll just call in Mrs. Fay.
Thank you. Mr. Lindsay won't be here tonight, they're still down there in session. Last week, LB 1067, which is the Common Levy Learning Community Bill passed with the details to be worked out in select file. And so that's where we are, we're still exactly where we were last week and we'll just keep the board updated as things unfold down there. But we're just, you know, remaining hopeful the legislative committee meets at least once a week, so, and will continue to do so until the session is over. So we'll just keep everyone updated.
Great, thank you very much. With that, we're going to move on to J2B, agreement with, is it Rubicon Agriculture, Agrobox, Bryan High, High School? Did I get that?
All right, we're ready. Good evening. Thanks for having me out here again to advocate for our school and our students. I believe everyone received the information on the action items and so forth of the Agrobox. But before answering questions that you may have, I thought it'd be great to talk about what this project is. And what this project is, is recycled shipping container, but when you put Agrobox, it sounds a little bit more exciting. What is the Agrobox? The Agrobox is a hydroponic system that will be divided into four areas or three areas, whatever areas we want. We're going to choose three areas because that's going to be the easiest and what we felt is going to be the most productive for Bryan High School. If you turn to your second page here, it has a shipping container in here and it's divided into three areas. What that's going to let our kids is do some hands-on, our urban agriculture career academy, and they'll be able to grow 20 all year long, all year long. So they'll be able to simulate the area where they want to grow. So they could simulate the first square here to southern, I'm from New Mexico, I'm going to say southern New Mexico and the climate control. And then the next one will be a little bit more humidity and they'll be able to see the actual seed produce. Why is this important? If you look at the first one, this is where the US, United States is going. We're in the cutting edge of technology right now and what's happening is here is water is sacred for, for farmers everywhere in the United States and for the world for that matter. But right now, if we were to use a hydroponic system, you're going to find that it's going to use not a lot of water. And it's going to help our students see that whole cycle growth from the beginning till the end. They'll be using it in the summertime. Outside, we have trestles that they'll be able to grow outside and they'll be do, be able to grow some tomatoes and so forth. And then the other one is they'll be able to grow inside as well. This is a, a partnership with Purdue University and we will be able to use Purdue University and their professors and they'll be able to help us out, kind of like cutting edge. Right now, they are working on some curriculum for STEM to incorporate with our urban ag and then we can bounce ideas with the professors. And we're hoping that in the long run, there'll be some learning opportunities for students that maybe we can visit Purdue University on an internship in the summer. And then also, we could take our teachers out there as well so they can learn the latest and the newest and so forth. There's a couple of other pictures here, but just to give you an idea of the four. The first part you'll see here is the computer system where the kids will be able to work at. There's the STEM part in the technology. They'll be also have the ability to look at bar graphs, everything that's going on. So you got the math in there. And this will be opened up for all students at Bryan High School, not just the academy. So we, we're opening up to everybody at Bryan High School so they can have some hands-on. Any questions? I'm going to stop because I can talk about our school all day long, so let it go.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Wayne?
You're purchasing one box?
Yes, just one.
Is one enough?
At this time, one is enough because we still have those aspirations of finishing up the greenhouse that we talked about previously. And we're pretty close to reaching that, to build a greenhouse. And then that'll be both sides of it, the traditional way of, of growing, and then we have the new way of growing. So when you incorporate those two, that's, that's what we want, that's what we want. We want the old and the new and see what our kids can do. When you talk about Nebraska, it's still in the old, say, and then incorporate the new would be awesome.
And is this, are you purchasing a new box or a used box?
It's going to be a, a used box.
Not that I'm, I'm against this, I'm for this, just that we have two railroad companies who buy 5,000 of these a year in Omaha. I know because on every television at one of the headquarters, they have lost boxes and we lose about a thousand of them a year somewhere in the yard. So we might be able to get more than one if we just maybe pick up the phone and call some corporations around here. Because I know they do give them away, especially like in some of the urbans to do some urban, urban revitalization. I know that those corporations do give them away, so it might be another way for us to get more.
And that's good to know because we can talk to the Rubicon and let them know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea. I'd like to see you move into aquaponics, grow some fish over there too.
Well, that's, you, you do have the ability to do that and we'd love to, to take it in there to that level.
I really like this idea.
Ms. America?
I, I just wanted to kind of clarify off of that. Because we're not, we're not buying a box that Rubicon is then going to come in and install the Agrobox components in. We're buying an already completed Agrobox.
It's going to be completed, correct, correct.
Okay, so it, it's worth looking into, it just may not even be a possibility for them to say, oh yeah, we'll work with the box that you have. Obviously, I think it's a wonderful idea because I love Bryan High School so much. But I wanted to point out, I, you've found the perfect link between the two career academies with the transportation, distribution logistics and this by using a shipping box.
Correct.
I just think that's so ironic.
And we're planning on incorporating our, our department after the TDLS will make the design and then they'll paint the outside of it. So it's going to be a, a school-wide effort.
Mr. Scanlon?
You had mentioned that you guys are working with Purdue University?
Correct.
Do they offer any like dual credits for any students from Bryan that might...
We're hoping we can go that route. So we just started the baby steps. So right now, it's a partnership, but initially, when we first started talking to the people from Rubicon, we started asking about learning opportunities and see if we can take a group of students out there to actually work with the labs, with the professors, and then having our teachers going up there to learn the phase as well. Once that gets established, I think that we, we could do some long-distance learning and we already talked about the long-distance learning opportunities here that OPS is doing. So I see. And we still haven't forgot UNL as well, and you, we still work with the UNL Extension Office, so they're part of, part of our program as well.
Okay, yeah, just, I mean...
We haven't forgotten about UNL and that's a big one and...
The local ones as well would be great to...
We'll continue to use UNL and we've talked to UNL, we've talked to Purdue, and they don't have a, an issue with working, with us working with both of them. In fact, they love that idea and, and so they're supporting us.
Great, thank you.
That's great. Well, thank you so much and, and please make sure that we get pictures and an update when it's installed and, and all of that. So first, we will need to vote on that. Does anyone else have any questions? If not, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the district and Rubicon Agriculture for the purchase of a contained hydroponic system Agrobox. So moved. Okay, motion by Ms. America, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, second by Mr. Wayne. All right, is there any other discussion between board members on this item? All right, if not, roll, roll call, please.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
Ada?
Motion carries. With that, we will next, and thank you very much for being here and for sharing, and we're looking forward to getting an update. With that, we will move on to J2C, acquisition of property for 60th and L Street site. And I think Mr. Dye, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Turnquist.
Ms. Scouting, I'd like to call legal counsel Scott Dye to the podium to address this issue.
Madam President, I'm finding a cold, so I'm having a little trouble speaking. Superintendent Evans, members of the board. We're here tonight to ask for permission from the board to proceed with the possibility of filing eminent domain proceedings to acquire two parcels of property. One is at 4505 South 60th Street, the other one is at 5450 L Street. By way of background, when you first decided to proceed with the 60th and L Street site and authorize the acquisition of the properties, which we asked at that time, you directed that the staff come back to the board anytime it wanted to proceed with eminent domain proceedings. So that's what we're doing here. This is an internal procedural step, which you have asked us to take before we do commence any kind of a proceeding. The eminent domain proceeding itself is a totally separate proceeding, which is undertaken in a county court if the parties can't reach an agreement. So being a procedural step, it doesn't mean that the district can't continue to talk to property owners. It doesn't mean that that will be shut off. But what it does mean is it gives us an avenue to resolve disagreements over value in front of a third party and partial board. So that's more what this step is. This is not required notice to anyone and, and we have not given notice in the past and we have done this. With these two properties, our negotiator, which is Midwest Rideaway, has decided that they've come as far as they can in trying to negotiate the properties. Our initial offer on each property was the appraised value we got from an independent appraiser that was engaged by the Board of Education or by the district, I should say. We offered that appraised value. During the course of those discussions, we actually upped the offer in each case by a percentage. We were unsuccessful in reaching agreements on either one. We do appreciate the BB's cooperation, they've been very cooperative with this whole process. We started making, with them, and making an offer in November of 2015. It's proceeded along and we just haven't reached an agreement. It doesn't mean we can't reach an agreement, as we continue to discuss with them, but we have some basic fundamental disagreements over value. That's the purpose of an eminent domain proceeding. You make your case in front of three independent appraisers and they tell you what the value is. Both parties have risk in that proceeding and it could go their way, it could go our way. But we do feel that we have tried to be good stewards of the money that's available for our site acquisition and that has told us to offer the appraisal plus offer some additional money when we felt it was necessary. So that's what this motion is, is to authorize us to commence those proceedings. I'd be willing to answer any questions the board might have.
Does anyone have any questions? So we're talking about, and I do remember when this was initially brought to us, we pulled out the eminent domain that were, that was in the initial proposal that you brought to us and asked you to come back separately. So you're clarifying that that's what you're doing right now?
Correct.
Which was just a procedural issue. And we're talking about these two separate properties, which we've kind of reached an impasse, is that correct?
Correct.
And so explain to us what the next steps would be if we were to approve this.
Well, the next steps would be, we would, procedural steps. And those are basically, the eminent domain procedures are done through county court. So what happens is, is we file a petition with the county court. The county judge would appoint a three-party board. Generally speaking, Douglas Killen, it consists of two appraisers or at least two people that are very experienced in real estate, and usually there's one lawyer in that board also. The owner's notified of the, of the filing of the proceedings and is also notified of the, of who the board of appraisers are and when the hearing will be. Both sides sit down with the three members of the board, present their case, either through legal counsel or they can do it personally, either way. The board of appraisers will also inspect the property and then they produce a report and that report of appraisers sets the value as they determine it. That gets filed with the court and if, the district then has to deposit the amount of that award with the county court. When we deposit the amount of the award with the county court, we get title to the property. We have 60 days to make that deposit. If we don't make... If we don't make the deposit, the proceeding is considered abandoned. And then if everybody is still unhappy with values, either side can appeal to District Court, which is, if it does go to District Court, then that's a trial in front of a jury, de novo, starting from scratch, and then, of course, the regular appeals process after
Mr. Scanlon?
I don't know if you were, I think you came in afterwards, they, we did have a property owner come and speak at Public Comment, and he said that they were, you know, disagreeing on certain values. Could you expand upon that, what in the district's point of view, what both sides are not seeing eye-to-eye valuation-wise?
Without getting into, I don't want to get into a lot of detail concerning the BB's property and its value, but I think the fundamental difference that we have is concerning, our appraiser is primarily looking at market. They're looking at what's available out there, how does it compare? An appraiser will look at comparable properties, comparable sales. They don't look at listings, they look at sales, because sales are actually established market price. They'll look at it, they'll adjust it so to account for differences in property, and then come out with their judgment of value. I think the BBs, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, because I've not been a part of the negotiation process, but what I understand is, is that they're concerned about what it costs to replace that property in the market. They think that the amount that the district is offering is not enough to enable them to acquire a replacement property. The property was built in 1987. Replacement costs is difficult to do on a property that's 20-some-odd-plus years old. That's why our appraiser thinks that the market value approach is the best way to go. You know, people can differ. If we can't reach an agreement, obviously the BBs can make that case in front of the Board of Appraisers, and we can make our case, and we'll see where they fall.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Dai? Okay, if not, at this time, I would entertain a motion that the district undertake condemnation proceedings in Douglas County Court to acquire the following property as described before us on item J-2C, and that the district's legal counsel be authorized and directed to initiate such proceedings. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So, motion by Mr. Scanlon, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fay. Is there any discussion board members might have? Okay, if not, roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne? Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Merrick?
Aye.
Ada?
I do. Motion carries. With that, I would call to your attention receipt of reports, item K-1, Purchasing Division Six Month Savings Report, that you can look at at your convenience. Ms. Williams?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Legal Counsel, Charles Wakefield, and Connie Kanoki, personnel, pending litigation, negotiations, and legal advice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Merrick. Roll call, please.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne? Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Merrick?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Ada?
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Legal Counsel, Charles Wakefield, and Connie Kanoki, personnel, pending litigation, negotiations, and legal advice. Let the record reflect, the board went into closed session at 8:03 PM.